I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start by saluting the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a whole.
Tonight in attendance are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Savavik, and Fleer. In addition, township manager Don Januso, chief of police Sean Bukowinski, planning director and assistant township manager Jack King, director of public works Bill Bodorf, township engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and township solicitor Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General township comments or questions will be addressed after the board of supervisors' discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Yeah, anything that's currently on the agenda.
Michelle Stonemark, 40 North DePauli. I'm here to talk about the, under new business, the voting to, what's it say, have a, what's it say? Have a hearing? The oil and gas ordinance? I can discuss that?
Discuss. So, I'll just stop you and save you some time, like before we get into it. The only thing we're doing in that situation is deciding whether or not to open it up for a public hearing. There's a number of ordinances, oil and gas, fire code, and Sunday work ordinance. So there's not going to be any decisions made this evening. There's not going to be really any discussion this evening other than whether or not this board wants to consider opening our oil and gas ordinance for future public hearings. And, and keep in mind, there's a process to that. So if we open it up for future public hearings, there would be discussions. We would hear everyone who wants to come up and speak. There would then need to be an additional, either specially advertised meeting or one of our regular meetings where there would be a vote taken place. So, if you're here because you think there's going to be a discussion this evening, specific, or an in-depth discussion specific to oil and gas, that's not the case. So I'll save you some time.
That's actually not what I was going to say, but thanks.
There you go.
I wanted to say that I have spoken to each one of the supervisors privately, aside from supervisor Savavik, about this topic of changing the oil and gas ordinance and how out of date it is and how, since Act 13 was overturned, we've never updated it. How surrounding communities ordinances are all way further up to date than our oil and gas ordinances. So I think it's something that this board needs to consider if we're going to move forward in the future with any oil and gas development. I think that, and again, like I said, I've talked to supervisor Fisher extensively, supervisor Agizio, supervisor Fleer, supervisor Cassiola, with the exception of Mr. Savavik, which I probably have in the past. I just don't remember, you know, anytime recent about the need for this. And all of you have agreed that yes, it is something that has been, that needs to be looked at again. So I encourage you to vote yes. Let's open it up. Let's let, hear what the public has to say.
There are a number, I mean, I'll just kind of address that. There are a number, more than a number. There's probably 100 different ordinances that need to be looked at and addressed and brought up to date and, yeah, that is one of them.
Well, that was also a pretty hot topic in this community, so.
For sure. Thank you.
Hi, Kara Scherden, 58 North DePauli Road, regarding resolution 042-2020, holding tank agreement for Range Resources Augustine wellsite. Is there any information that can be shared on what this is in regard to? Because according to the only information I have available to me, which is the published schedule as of 1/28, there is no discussion of anything happening before spring 2020. So if there's a communication that's going on between the township and Range that's going to result in activity on the wellsite or plan to do something, which this line item here indicates to me that there's some plans or intent to do something, if they're applying, what is this, a permit? Is it, what is a holding tank agreement? None of this information is outlined in the schedule. So I'd ask for any information regarding this line item to be shared.
So, here's what I'm doing. I can't, I don't have anything to answer that question. I would assume there is someone here tonight from Range that intends to, yes, no? But still, like if there is nobody here, I-
I would then ask that that item be tabled.
Be tabled, yeah.
Because the information is not being disclosed.
Right, and at this point, I don't think we even have anything, so.
It's the standard sewage holding.
Somebody from Range should have come.
Not necessarily. It's administrative in that Range Resources applies in our township, of course, to the Washington County Sewage Council. The permits are issued by the Washington County Sewage Council based on their rules and regulations. And then, that's the overseeing power when it comes to those, those holding tank agreements.
Or we sent the agreement to review.
I don't know that Liz sent it to the board or not.
So how are we supposed to vote on it if we've never read it ourselves?
I'll see if she gets you a copy.
Yeah, I mean, I, when we- When we get to that-
They got to put up $2,500.
When we get to that item, we can address it, but I can't, I can honestly say I've never seen it, so.
So my only point is, like the only way for me to get information on this, it seems that it will affect something, is the published schedule. There's no indication of any planned, anything happening on the site in any kind of specific nature, in any future time, period. So again, I'll bring this up every single time. I'll come up here every single month and say the same thing. If there are any plans that are going on regarding intention for activity on that site, the information should be disclosed in a schedule in some adequate level of detail. And catching something on an item that apparently nobody really has any additional information to share on is concerning to me. So again, I would say we don't vote on anything if anyone, no one here can say what's being voted on. That's my point.
I hear what you're saying, that it's a standard agreement, but I think that it should have been furnished to this board because at the end of the day, if we vote on it, we're responsible for that decision, so.
Understood. This is probably the first one that she's seen since she's taken the role of-
I'm not placing blame. I just think, and we can address it when we get to it, but I do agree with Ms. Scherden that perhaps this needs to be tabled. I was under the assumption that someone from Range would be here to discuss.
No, in fact, I don't think Range will be. Like I said, it's just simply an application that's handled through the county. As long as it meets the county approval, I don't think there's any way that this board could override that county's approval. They're the controlling body for that particular holding tank.
But we're being asked to vote on it.
Because there's money, like Tom said, there's money involved. You have to take a $1,500 escrow because there's money involved. It requires an official action of the board.
Okay. So is, I'm sorry, is the holding tank for water regarding operations at the site? Is it something related to sewer? Do we even know like-
Sewage.
Sewage for, for facilities that are going to be-
For bunk houses.
Okay, so, I never, I didn't realize that was the one.
They're not approved for bunk houses on that site.
It's the sewage for the bunk houses.
That, there's not an approval for, okay. So when we get to that, we'll address it, but I can say at this point, I am not comfortable, personally, I'm not comfortable enough voting on it without having seen the agreement or fully understanding it. So we can, we can get to that when we, okay, we get to that item.
That's fine, and that just, I mean, that goes again to my request that additional detail be provided on the schedule. Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks. Anybody else? Before we move on? Okay. I'm not going to read to you the number of announcements. I will call out two specific ones that I really think are important that you know about. The first one is, there is going to be an electronic recycling program on Saturday, March 21st, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Cecil Township Municipal Building. There is a two-item limit on televisions per household. There is no charge for items unless a television screen is broken. A $50 fee will be charged. This event is for Cecil Township residents only. Supervisor Agizio is the one that sets this up every year. I know it's a huge benefit to the residents, so just a quick thank you to him for setting that up. And then also, for those of you that are aware, some people in our community lost their home to fire. So there will be a spaghetti dinner on March 1st, 2020, from 12:00 to 4:00 at the Hills Hendersonville Civic Association. The proceeds will benefit the victims affected by two house fires in Georgetown Estates. There is more information available on our township website as well as on social media. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to any of us. I think we're all aware of the details, as well as, if you're here, Wendy Johnson, there she is, Wendy Johnson, who's working to get this set up, so, thank you. All right, moving on. Okay, so we're going to start with the resolutions. Oh 39, 2020, consider the first release of financial security posted for the installation of public improvements for Traditions of America Phase 1 from $3,540,813.93 to $3,123,279.76, a total reduction of $417,534.18 as recommended by the township engineer.
Madam Chair, this is her work in Phase 1 of the Traditions of America development. We've reviewed the request and we recommend the reduction as you just read.
Any questions on this item? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
It passes 3-2. Oh 40, 2020, consider application 2019-027 for the Traditions of America Phase 2 subdivision plan. Location, Han Road, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Applicant, Traditions of America. The plan received Planning Commission approval on December 19th, 2019, contingent upon addressing comments from the township engineer. Anyone from Traditions of America?
I'll just say that all of the technical comments related to the plan have been addressed. And then there was additional information that the consultant for the developer provided related to the parking. I think they can speak to that if the supervisors have questions.
Yes, that is correct. Ren Shiren with PBE, we did issue a letter in response to the comments regarding parking. And if there are any questions about that, we can-
You did not add any overflow parking?
I'm sorry?
You didn't add overflow parking?
We did not add any additional parking.
Mistress, can you make sure your microphone's on or speak into it? Sorry. There you go.
We did not add any additional parking above what was shown and approved on the final PRD plan. As a quick summary, the code requires two parking spaces per single-family unit. We are actually providing four spaces, two garage spaces, and then two driveway spaces. As far as the clubhouse, we have a 10,000-square-foot clubhouse. Based on the code requirements, we need to provide 50 parking spaces. We are providing 60. So in all instances of the uses proposed when the development, we are in excess of what is required. We believe that it is adequate.
But in the real world, people parking at the far end are not going to park down there and walk all the way up to visit somebody. We discussed this at the first meeting, and we even pointed out, and you pointed out where you could put overflow parking. And the cul-de-sac back at the end, you said you could put some. Now you're worried about losing a few lots. You got to have overflow parking.
I do not recall that conversation, that statement. Okay. What I can say right now is that I believe we are in conformance with the code and we are complying with the approved preliminary PRD, final PRD, and preliminary subdivision.
There was supposed to be overflow parking, and you were supposed to make means for places to plow the snow.
I agree with the locations to plow the snow. We will provide the easements in the locations of the cul-de-sac until such time that that connects to the adjacent property. But as far as conditions for overflow parking, I do not believe there were any assigned to the PRD approval.
There were no.
Right, and just so I can remind the board, this final PRD was approved, so at this point, they need to demonstrate compliance with the approved plan. Obviously, there, people might have additional concerns, but so long as they comply with the approved plan.
Do I have any other board questions or comments? Do you have something? Go ahead.
Good evening. Dan Graham's the attorney for Traditions of America. I was here along with Grant as we went through the tentative approval. And as you just said, Gretchen, many of these issues were addressed in great detail, and we were back to the Planning Commission several times because they wanted the driving pads to be increased in size. I remember we went through and Grant developed a side so you had the largest king pickup truck, king cab pickup truck you could possibly get to fit in. So these additional parking spaces that we've provided in every driveway were very closely examined by the Planning Commission as we approved it through the first time. So these issues have been addressed. I understand-
Wait a minute. The only reason you increased the parking space was because they figured out the trucks were going to be blocking the sidewalk. So they moved the setback back further so that any vehicles wouldn't be blocking sidewalks. It's not that you gave us anything.
Well, it made sure that those vehicles could fit there in it, but the point is, it addressed the parking issue at that time. And as part of the addressing that issue was to make sure that the largest vehicle available would fit off the street. So those are two additional parking spaces per unit. We're required to have two per unit. We have four per unit. We're over double the parking spaces required under your ordinance. In addition, this is unique, and I agree that somebody that's very, very remote might not park at the clubhouse, but that clubhouse, we actually have 60 visitor parking spaces. I understand it's a 10,000-foot clubhouse, and we're required to have 50. However, I would argue that all 60 spaces are visitor because that clubhouse is only available to the residents of this community. So if somebody's, if somebody's coming there to that clubhouse, they're a guest of someone in that community. So if they're at the clubhouse, they're not at their home, and they're at the clubhouse. So it's not like you're going to have some event, you're not going to have all the residents there having people at their home and then have some other group of people at the clubhouse.
So can I ask a question? So I live in a neighborhood where there's no on-street parking. If I'm having a large number of people over, I call our police parking and let them know that I'm going to be having people over. It's only for whatever hours that I'm going to have it, and then that's the end of it. Are they allowed in Traditions of America to do that? To do that same thing if they're having an event?
Are they allowed to?
So if I live in Traditions of America and I'm having my extended family over, could I call the police and let them know that for the next four hours I'm going to have on-street parking?
As long as you're not blocking someone's driveway, sure.
Right, obviously.
Absolutely. Yes. And this parking that's provided here is not unique to this project. This is the standard parking that's provided. So this isn't the first time Traditions has built a community with the parking that you're seeing here.
Right.
This is what they've done. They know that this accommodates the plans where they have other ones, and many in the western Pennsylvania area. So they're very comfortable that this will do. And you're right, there are going to be certain times where there's a crowd.
But there's an except, there's an allowance for it.
There's an allowance, correct.
And just, most, there is a 55 and older age limit in this community, correct?
That's correct.
So the likelihood that two or people, two or more people in a 55 and older community would have more than four vehicles is unlikely.
On a regular basis, very unlikely.
And you know going in, and you know going in what the parking requirements are. Could you, could you please not talk while we're, thank you. You know going into this community what the parking requirements are, so there's no surprise.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So do I have a motion? Or do I have any other board comments or questions about this item? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
It passes 3-2.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh 41, 2020, consider application 2019-025 for the Iskey Lot Line Revision. Location, Fawcett Church Road, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Applicant, James Iskey. The plan received Planning Commission approval on January 16th, 2020.
I don't believe, is anybody here for the Iskey Plan? This is a lot line revision that is located on Fawcett Church Road. It's a simple plan where they're taking property from one side and dedicating it to the other. I don't have a, the plan's not rotated correctly here. Sorry about that. But the, I've got to read it upside down. So .63 acres is going from one property to the next. The plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission. Initially, they tabled it because they did not address comments. The plan came back in last month. They had addressed all the comments related to the plan and the Planning Commission recommended for approval. There's no sewage required here because these are existing structures. So it's just, like I said, a simple lot line revision.
Any questions or comments by the board? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right, aye.
It passes 5-0. Oh 42, 2020, consider the holding tank agreement for Range Resources Augustine wellsite at 102 North DePauli Road, McDonald, PA 15057. As Mrs. Scherden pointed out, even though I'm being told this is a standard agreement, I don't think I've ever approved one, and I've never seen it. So I would ask that this be tabled just for one month so that we can be given the agreement to review ourselves and/or speak with somebody from Range who can comment on it, and then we can move forward.
I'll make a motion to table.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor signify by-
Do we have a discussion?
Sure.
Or does, could Dawn shed any more light on that?
And that the board has not reviewed it, I think you need to see it.
All those, any other comments before we move on? All those in favor of tabling this for another month? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes for table 5-0. Oh 43, 2020, consider authorizing the advertisement and preparation of specifications for bid on the 2020 road program. Hey, Joe?
Thank you, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. We have before us a presentation for the 2020 pavement maintenance-
Can you make sure your microphone's on? Or maybe just hold it, it's, there you go.
Okay, we'll just do that.
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me? Okay. Now you can hear me? Okay.
Thanks.
We've got together with Bill and then put together the 2020 pavement maintenance program. It's separated into five contracts. We're going to have a liquid fuels contract, which will be Contract A. We'll have a non-liquid fuels contract, it'll be Contract B. Contract C will be a seal coat. Contract D will be a seal coat, and Contract E will be a line striping contract. So. There's an overall map of the township showing contracts A through D. Contract E, which is the line striping, we don't have shown there because it's all over the township.
Do we have one we could read, a map that we could look at?
I think there's one included in the, in the presentation.
I don't have, I mean-
I'll get you, I'll get you some.
Okay.
I'll get you some larger maps.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay.
Ooh, that's tiny, too.
Okay, as I said, Contract A will be our append-on liquid fuels project. That will be three-inch rotor milling of the roads, cutting keyways, completing base repairs, doing inlet adjustments and placing two inches of binder, inch and a half of wearing service and wedge curb. The three roads that are part of the contract, liquid fuels project, will be Klinger Road from Fawn Lake to 27 Klinger Road. The next road will be County Line Road from Morgan Road to 214 County Line Road. And then the third road will be Wilson Avenue from Used Bishop Road to Bishop Alley. Total estimated cost for Contract A is $406,292.50.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Why are we doing County Line Road?
We're, we're-
They have it bonded. They should be responsible for that. Half of that should be Independence excavating, and half of it should be Walsh. That road's all totally bonded. They're the ones that tore it up. They should have to repair it.
I don't think that section of it is bonded.
I think it is.
It's not. We couldn't bond it because it's not an approved road. There's no structure to that road. So basically, we started off with Luchitsel, or Red Dog Road, Luchitsel Road. That road has no structure to it. There's nothing there to bond.
Okay.
Now they do owe a portion of reconstruction from the cul-de-sac, including the cul-de-sac, to house number 214. That's why we're starting at house 214 and coming out to Borde Grove.
Bill, can you use the microphone just so it gets picked up and recorded? Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay.
Can we just double-check the?
Sure, we'll double-check.
I think that's right, but can we double-check that?
We'll verify that.
Thank you.
Sure, not a problem. We can verify that. Okay, Contract B will be our non-liquid fuels project. It'll be paid out of the liquid, out of the capital account. Same scope will work as Contract A with the milling, cutting keyways, base repairs, inlet adjustments, two inches of binder, and an inch and a half of wearing surface. The two roads that are making up Contract B are Clifford Road from Miller's Run Road to the cul-de-sac and Lenneby Lane from Swihart Road to the terminus. Total cost, $182,850. Any questions? Contract C, that's going to be our fiber reinforced seal coat. That'll be the application of the fiber reinforced seal coat with the fog seal. The areas that we're going to be using, doing this year are Technology Drive from South Point Drive to Hill Point Drive, and Virginia Lane from Anger Road to the cul-de-sac. Total estimated cost, $72,723.75. Contract D, that's going to be our polymer modified single seal coat. That'll be the seal coat with the fog seal. That's going to be Swihart Road from Route 980 to Route 980, and Kelso Road from Swihart Road to the Cecil border. Total estimated cost, $117,025. The map on Swihart's divided up into two, two frames because Swihart Road's length being as long as it is. And then we have that portion of Kelso. And then Contract E, it's going to be our line striping contract, something that we haven't done in the past, but has, we have a need. This, the scope of this work is going to be a double-yellow center line on O'Hara Road and Mawhinney Road, and then a complete reapplication of paint to the existing line striping and pavement markings within the South Point Development. They're all listed out there. Total estimated cost, $45,816.25. And then the last slide will be the overall cost there. It's not showing up because it's down below there on the, on the bar. There we go. There we go. Total estimated cost of the five contracts is $824,707.50. That'll give you some money to do some other projects within the township.
Some money, so I would think that was there just to give us some room in case the bids come in higher, but you're saying for other projects like the parking lot or?
Well, we know there's some work that needs to be done on the bridges, so we want to keep some money in reserve for that. Depending upon those prices-
And when you say bridges, you do not, just to clarify for the public, you do not mean bridges in Cecil Park? You mean road bridges, like?
Bridges specifically Creedmore, the Creedmore Bridge. And also, there needs to be a decision related to Ridgewood. Probably won't do anything with that one this year because you're going to have to make some decisions on that. And then there's a number of bridges within the township that just need normal maintenance work so they don't become problems down the road. So we're going to be presenting something to you on that. But we all thought it was prudent to, and you can always add on to these contracts. It gives us some flexibility. They're all unit-priced contracts, so if the bridge work comes in less and the paving a little bit less, there'll be some flexibility that Bill can recommend with our office to recommend other things to be done.
Right, which we've done in the past.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Question, just on that, I don't know, what's the urgency on doing that County Line Road in the first place? With all the construction of the Mon Valley Expressway? Why, why are we choosing to do that this year?
They are done using County Line Road as any type of access up there. That, that road has been shut off on both sides of, of the intersection of the new highway coming through there. So it's, there's a cul-de-sac up there right now. It's already been constructed, and it's no longer open to through traffic. So residents are certainly deserving of having that road improved. They've put up with a lot up there. And the road is actually in pretty bad shape.
All construction is going to come then on the, the expressway itself? All vehicles?
All vehicles will stay within the work zone of the turnpike up there. There's no need for them to come out onto that, out onto County Line Road. There's nothing up there for them to work on.
Okay.
For, I mean, I can, I know personally I was on County Line two days ago, three days ago. It's a mess. So, yeah, it's bad. It's really bad. Um, okay. Uh, so do I have a motion on oh forty-three twenty twenty? Consider authorizing the advertisement and preparation of specifications for bid? I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh forty-four twenty twenty. Consider authorizing the advertisement and preparation of specifications for the repairs to the Creedmore Road Bridge.
So, uh, just to give the, to give the supervisors, uh, indication, this is the Creedmore Road Bridge. Uh, Creedmore Road is relatively low in terms of, uh, number of structures on this, on the, uh, on the road, uh, but it is access to the sewage treatment plant, uh, for, for Miller's Run, uh, so that it does carry weighted vehicles from time to time. And there was a routine bridge inspection that was done on the project, uh, that Dawn furnished to us. So, uh, location wise, just so everybody's aware, this is Rising Road, this is Miller's Run Road, uh, this is the, the county line right here. So as you come up and go up Rising, Creedmore bears off to the left and as you go up here a little bit further, this sewage treatment plant for the municipal authority lies up in this, in this location here. Uh, so the, the immediate repairs are those repairs that affect the weighted part of the bridge. Uh, some of the steel beams have, uh, corroded and there's a need to, uh, basically to, to get the beam, to get the bridge back up to full capacity. There's a need to add some, uh, structural plates and, uh, actually we've come up with some channels that would be bolted to the bridge, uh, that would get it back to its, uh, its, uh, design level. Uh, the cost of that, we got one cost in from one contractor at around eleven thousand dollars for that, that particular work. And I know Dawn could authorize that, but I just wanted to bring it to the supervisor's attention. I think that's the only thing that we really need to do right now and get your authorization. I'm just saying to, to authorize the manager based upon quotes, uh, to get this immediate work done. And then as you can see, there's some other things that need to be done. They're not priority, first priority items, but they need to be looked at and within a year, uh, there's some underpinning that needs to be done at the abutments. Uh, the deck pans on the bridge, uh, are corroded, uh, they need to be addressed and, uh, there's some stream bank restoration. So in these reports, what they do is they list the highest priority item first and then they decrease in priority as you go down. Uh, so, uh, this is just a better shot of the underside of the beams. You can see that they're corroded. Uh, this left-hand shot is of a beam. This is the deck pan, uh, which holds the bituminous paving on the road in it. And again, you can see there's some sectional loss. So, uh, what we would do is come in and actually bolt some channels onto these beams, uh, to, to increase their sectional properties and, uh, we're gonna review that, make sure it's okay with PennDOT, uh, make sure they'll, they'll, uh, and we've already tested the rating, uh, we feel that it'll, it'll, uh, pass their approval, uh, but before we do it, we'll get PennDOT's okay on it. So that's just a brief on the bridge. Uh, I think what I'm just looking for, the board's authorization to authorize Dawn, I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna be over the bid limit. I think we'll be within bid limit, just authorize him to proceed on the lowest quote.
Any questions by the board?
Question, so that bid did come in and it is at eleven thousand dollars?
Yeah, but I, I, it was an email. I wanted something in writing and I'm also getting two other quotes, Eric.
Okay.
So I have, those are out and I just didn't have them back for the board tonight, but would like, with Dawn and I, I'd like to proceed with this as soon as we're able. It'll take a little bit of time to order the materials, too.
Sure.
Would we be safe to make a motion that is not to exceed eleven thousand?
Uh, I prefer to give a little, little bit of latitude. I don't know what the...
Why would we?
Quote limit is.
Right, so I would say as long as you don't go into the, um, threshold of advertising, which is twenty-one...
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, twenty-five. Um, so as long as you're in that range, all you need is the three quotes and keep them on file and you can proceed with the lowest quote.
And there's clearly enough money in reserve in the road program budget to cover twenty thousand dollars, so why tie our hands?
What's your estimated cost of this, Dan?
Uh, of this, all of the work?
Yeah, all of it.
Frank, um, I, I haven't pre, the abutment work is relatively minor, but if we have to take the deck pans off and repave the, pave it, it'll, you know, we could probably by the, by the time we're done here, we'll be in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range.
Yeah, 'cause the, uh, pictures Bill showed me, the deck pans are pretty bad.
Yeah, they, they need replaced, too. But, but our immediate concern is because the municipal authority hired whole sludge out of there, we wanna get it back up to the rating and then that'll give us a little bit of time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do I have a motion just to consider authorizing the advertisement preparations for the repair?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero.
Did you give the authority to the manager to move forward if, with a low, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I thought I heard advertising.
Advertising preparation of specifications for the repair, yeah.
Okay.
So, yep. I, sorry, I read through that quickly. Oh forty-five twenty twenty. Consider the appointment of Jordan Tax Service as deputy, deputy tax collector for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one.
So this is the same resolution, um, that this board entered into two years ago when you last, um, appointed your tax collector. You currently have a tax collector that you appointed at your reorganization meeting and your tax, tax collector wishes to deputize Jordan Tax Service, which is actually quite common, um, and that will be for the next two years. So she will deputize her duties to Jordan, uh, who will then do the tax collecting.
Thank you for that explanation. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh forty-six twenty twenty. Consider the minutes from the Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty reorganization meeting of the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh forty-seven twenty twenty. Consider the minutes from the Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty Cecil Township Board of Supervisors regular monthly meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh forty-eight twenty twenty. Consider the minutes from the Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty special meeting of the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh forty-nine twenty twenty. Consider the minutes from the Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty special meeting of the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
I'm second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh fifty twenty twenty. Consider the general fund invoices from January first through January thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Make a motion.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Onto administrative reports. Bill? Public Works?
Uh, yes, I just have a couple of things, um, with regard to the roads. I met last week with, um, representatives of, uh, Fayette Construction and Turnpike and they are committed to, uh, and they've wrapped up their contract over McDonald. They had, uh, some minor paving to do, asphalt paving. But we looked at Sherlock Circle, um, a portion of which they used as access into their work zone and, um, I've asked them to, uh, uh, to do, uh, full depth pavement repairs. I have that on my in-house program. It's a circle and, uh, it was on our, uh, uh, schedule for, uh, repair this year. They're gonna do the full depth base repairs for us. And then we moved over to Dover Drive, uh, just off of nine eighty and they've committed to, uh, uh, doing, uh, select base repairs, uh, uh, scratch leveling, repaving wedge curbs into the, uh, inlets over there also. This work will of course start, uh, once the plants open up for the season. Uh, these are two roads that were, uh, basically, uh, non-bondable roads. We, uh, what we did to start the, the work was, uh, video, had them videotape the roads and the conditions that they were, uh, prior to the start of construction, we went back and determined that there was some cupping and some damage done because of the way the vehicles and they have gotten on board with the, uh, repair of those two roads for us. Um, the only thing, the only other thing I wanna bring to the board's attention is where we're at in our winter season right now. Um, to date, I've had two, uh, all, uh, all crew callouts, uh, which is unheard of for, for where we're at in the season. Uh, under the, uh, purchasing contract for salt, um, we estimate every year that we'll be around four thousand tons with our purchase. Uh, to date, and we're required to, uh, purchase sixty percent of that, which is twenty-four hundred ton. To date, all we've purchased is, uh, six hundred tons. So we still have eighteen hundred ton out there that, uh, we're gonna have to purchase and put somewhere. Uh, that's the only reason I bring this up is, uh, I have no place to put that. So, um, with a little luck, uh, we'll get some snow and we'll use a little bit more of it. But, uh, right now, um, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a place to put the salt, um, because that's a sizable, sizable amount. Um, I will get back to the board at a later date, next board meeting. I, I should have a better idea of where we stand with, uh, our purchase requirement for the remaining, uh, balance of that salt. That's all I have. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Bill. Um, engineers report. Dan?
Members of board, just two, two things I'd like to review with you tonight. Uh, this is Mike Colette from our office. Mike is the, uh, project manager who is helping out with the park bridge project. And, uh, as everybody knows, the township was fortunate enough, uh, to get the, uh, LSA grant for the township bridges. And, uh, then Bill Butteroff, uh, set up a meeting with Conspan, uh, right after the meeting last month to talk to them about the availability of, uh, prefabricated bridges, uh, to construct in the park. So before we got too far along with everything, I thought I'd just bring this to the board's attention. And, uh, typically with bridges, you talk about type, size and location of the bridges. So I think we'd just like to get consensus, uh, that we're on the right path from the board tonight before we proceed any further with anything. Uh, so this is the, uh, map of the park. As you can see, the township building here is to the right in the parking area. We're calling this bridge number one. Uh, this is bridge number two, bridge number three and bridge number four. So, uh, right out of the gate, uh, the proposal is to eliminate bridge number two. Correct? Or, I'm sorry, bridge number three, uh, which is right here. And, uh, the idea then would be to make, uh, bridge number one, uh, the bridge that has ADA access. Uh, the township forces would be, uh, would be making the connection, uh, to make sure that that meets, uh, ADA requirements. And then bridge number four would be the bridge that could har, carry vehicles. Uh, that's, that's gonna be just wide enough for vehicles and be sized that it could take like a small pickup truck over it, uh, so that township maintenance forces could get on the other side of the creek.
Yeah, I wanna make it clear, I think we need to make it clear, there was a misconception in our past meetings. The purpose of that bridge that is carrying vehicles isn't for just the average person to drive around, 'cause somebody approached me and said, "Well, now you're gonna have cars driving through the park." That's not it at all. It's so that our public works can get over there as they need to, um, to service the minor pavilion. I, I would imagine that we would be willing to make exceptions for, um, people who are handicapped if you've made prior arrangements with the township. Um, but as a general rule, it will not be just open so that anybody can drive through there.
Dan, and that, um, on his drawing, it's not the minors pavilion. I think that's incorrect across from bridge four.
Yeah, that's you, you are correct.
That's, uh, pavilion number three.
That's pavilion number three. I got an old map up on the screen. I'm sorry, cut that. Yeah, the minors...
Minor pavilion's on the other side.
The minors pavilion is actually located, uh...
Between two and one, between bridges two and one.
Yeah, between one and two.
On, close to the Montreux Trail, sorry.
So that, that's the proposal, three bridges, uh, eliminate, eliminate the one bridge. Uh, this would be ADA access, this would be vehicle access. So that's the number of bridges. Uh, the proposal, uh, from Conspan is to provide a, uh, Corten Steel Bridge with a wood deck. Uh, the Corten Steel doesn't need painted. Uh, it's, it's, it's durable. Uh, they're using it on a lot of the trail bridges. I think I passed, I, I think in the correspondence that I sent to the board, I gave some, uh, visuals of, of, uh, some finished bridges, uh, related to that. So, uh, that's the proposal on the, uh, type of bridge. And then the other good part about this is that with Conspan, uh, they are on the Coast Stars project, so the bridges can be purchased directly by the township, uh, without any contractor markup and then the township could just put the, uh, construction of the abutments and the installation of the bridges out for bid. So, um, that, that's really in essence, uh, we just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. Uh, there's a number of things that would need to be done before we got to that point. Uh, there needs to be some survey work out there to get some good elevations. Uh, we have to apply for some permits. Uh, there's, uh, uh, chapter one oh five GP eleven permits, uh, for crossing the creek. And then of course, uh, put bid documents together and, and put it out the bid. So, um, that's the update on the report and if there's any questions.
And Bill, we still plan on using the bridges that we went out and looked at? No? 'Cause those would be rated at twenty-five ton.
Any other? Dan?
I'd like to take this time to, um, thank Supervisor Fisher for stepping up to the plate, doing the legwork and, uh, giving the presentation for applying for the LSA grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the... Just, Ron, the, uh, the three of the, or two out of the three bridges are gonna be pedestrian. They'll only be six feet wide. And then the third bridge will be twelve feet.
Right.
Little ones don't need to be.
How, how many tons are gonna hold, though?
Uh, we real, I think it was like ten ton was the max on that one.
Uh, the, 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 the big difference with these bridges is the, uh, the span. Uh, the minimum span right now that we're looking at is seventy feet, but we'll determine that in the field work with the, uh, with the engineer over there. We're trying to get the abutments out of the, uh, the stream. So that was one of the considerations when we started looking at these structures, how do we get the abutments out of the stream? And we increased the, uh, the span length on them. And, uh, Rich Hill, who's, uh, the engineer with, uh, uh, Conspan, uh, gave us the details on doing so. So that's, and, and, and again, once you do that, you start to minimize the scar that takes place in the, uh, stream, you know, uh, from the stream, uh, at the base of the abutment. over there. And they're looking at a early fall start, which would be right after the Fall Festival. They tell us that they'll need five to six weeks' time to complete the work that they have to do with the mudsills and the rock veins and stuff like that, that they have planned over there. And I have some crews over there right now, doing some advanced work that we've identified on our tour with them. And one thing I do wanna mention, in the past, I've talked to the board about identifying and placing a handicap access area for folks in wheelchairs to fish from in the stream. We've identified that same area, I think I previously mentioned to everyone, just across Bridge Number One, on the left-hand side. The folks from Cal U were excited about it, and they are going to do the work, no cost to the township. They'll put the seawall in and stuff like that. We'll do the paving and the rail behind it, so.
Sounds great.
Cindy, just one more update, to expand upon what Bill said. There was a meeting with the township, our office, and Bill with Cal U, and represented as a PennDOT. PennDOT is proposing to do in-stream improvements to Miller's Run through the Township Park. They have to do that as a part of their pollution reduction plan. The good news is that Mike found out that we can also, we can both take credit, PennDOT can take credit, and the township can take credit for that improvement. So, money the township would add to spend on stream improvements is going to be completed by PennDOT. It's probably, it's in planning this year, depending upon grant funding, what they get. So, we're not sure it'll happen this year, but nonetheless, we'll work with them and work, the bridge project can proceed irrespective of that.
Sounds great. Thank you. Gretchen? Dan, is that your-
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Gretchen, go ahead, you have yours.
Thank you. First and foremost of importance for the board is that Judge Lucas finally ruled on the validity challenge related to the South Point ordinance. It was Ordinance 11, 2016. We sent that around to the board, so your ordinance is valid. There was still an appeal period that has not run yet, but at this point, the court has found in favor of the township as it relates to that ordinance, and held up its validity. We have also been working on an employee handbook, and our employment attorney has been working closely with Dawn in that matter. We've worked on a couple personnel matters this month, as well as the Hart and Long matter. Finalized the deputization resolution and agreement, worked with the school and Jordan to finalize that. We helped prepare the zoning officer for an MDJ hearing, which was ultimately settled. We are working on a deed of dedication for a couple parcels at the request of Dawn and Dan to clean them up. We're waiting on a title search for those. And I filed preliminary objections in the Casiola matter on behalf of the township, and we appeared in court last week on that matter. Other than that, kind of day-to-day, working with the manager, working with the engineer, and working with the zoning officer as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board of Supervisors discussion of new business. There are actually three ordinances you'll see listed, oil and gas, fire code, and work on Sunday ordinance. As many of you are aware, a lot of our ordinances haven't been updated in a significantly long time. And as things change throughout the years, different state laws are passed or whatever, we need to go back and amend those ordinances so that they may match state law. We need to do that for a number of reasons, but one of which is to protect ourselves in the event that somebody brings an item before this board that falls under one of these ordinances. It opens this township up for litigation, if, and quite honestly, significant attorney's fees, if our ordinance is invalid, and it causes a lot of problems. So, all that I'm asking at this point for those three things is that we schedule a future public hearing, where you will be allowed, anyone will be allowed who wants to speak on any one of these ordinances. And I would also ask that we allow our solicitor Gretchen to take a look through these ordinances to see what needs to be changed. It's a protection for everyone, it's a protection for the residents of the township. You know, it keeps us in current with the laws, so that when we go to court, we don't have, or if a resident comes before us, we can say, "We are sure that these ordinances are compliant with current laws." I was just, I'd had a conversation with Supervisor Gisio, this is just the beginning. We have a lot of work to do, we haven't updated ordinances in a long time. So, we have a lot to bring up to date, and this is kind of just the beginning.
Through the years, though, our solicitors have always reviewed our ordinances for us and kept them up to date, so I think it's important that our solicitor does look at these to either confirm or find shortcomings in them.
I agree 100%. Yeah. So, if this board is okay with it, I'd first like to ask Gretchen to take a look, Gretchen and her firm to take a look at these, but I would also like to schedule a future public hearing date to allow us to hear public comment from our residents.
I'll make a motion.
There's not a vote. If you're okay with it, we'll ask Gretchen, just say yes or no, and then we'll schedule. All right, let's schedule a future public hearing date. We're probably gonna need a significant amount of time, considering the ordinances, so I would not recommend doing it before or after a regularly scheduled board meeting. Anyone wanna throw a date or time out there? I can, if you don't want to. All right, if nobody wants to. What if we schedule it for Monday, well, all right, we'll give Gretchen some time to review. What if we schedule it for Monday, February 24th, at 7:00 PM? Does that work for everyone?
It's good.
Okay, everyone. So, we will have public hearings on our oil and gas ordinance, our fire code ordinance, and our work on Sunday ordinance on February 24th at 7:00 PM. All public comment will be welcome and heard, that will be your opportunity to let us know kind of what you're thinking.
So, this is more of a workshop?
Correct.
Yeah, there's nothing drafted yet, it's more of a workshop.
We're just working through it to hear what you have to say. Before any of this, any of the changes that you bring to us, or that this board suggests would be enacted, we would have to have another public vote. So, we will have this workshop on February 24th, we will hear anybody who wants to speak within reason, but we'll hear anybody who wants to speak on February 24th, and then we will have to have another special meeting, or we will have to add it to an agenda at a future township meeting to take any formal action on it. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Are we sufficient? Go ahead.
I have one item on new business about the company in South Point. Dawn requested that they need to expand their business, I think it's OMA, A-U-M-A.
OMA, yes.
Is, wait, is this related to our ordinances?
No, I thought you were done with that.
Okay, okay, if we're done, moving on.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not done.
I think Eric has a comment.
Same topic. Would be, does that give Gretchen enough time to look into what updated ordinances are in place, or?
Well, the workshop won't be her, won't be for her, she will give that to us separately. The workshop will be just so that we can hear from our residents. And then, we'll kind of combine what the answer we get from Gretchen, and what we hear from our residents together into a formal change to the ordinance that will then be voted on at a future public meeting.
All right.
Makes sense?
And Dawn, we're fine with advertising?
Yes.
The 24th, okay.
I think you only need 24 hours for a workshop.
24 hours.
Yeah, 24 hours, so we're well ahead of the 24 hours. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Tom, now.
Dawn, on that request for that excess property, that OMA, that they wanna expand their business, and they said they'll be hiring maybe 50 more employees, and we have that piece of property right by the old bridge, the original bridge in South Point, where the county, instead of just giving us the 50-foot right-of-way, they give us all their excess property around there, 'cause they didn't want it, it's useless. The company would put it back in the tax rolls. And have you gotten any, or any response?
I've received limited response from board members as to what we do with that. Maybe I should, if the board will allow Gretchen to look into that, to see what we do, because it would be the transfer of real property.
Right.
You know, and a lot of times, that requires a public process. I don't know if that would make it any different here, but we should have Gretchen look into that, and then I'll have her provide a brief report to the board, and then we can-
I know the company would be required to pay all the costs for getting it transferred.
All right.
Quickly, my fault, I didn't put on the agenda, I have a meeting scheduled with State Representative Jason Ortiz today to discuss more, we've actually had multiple discussions, but to discuss again, future grants, I will continue to work for that. I would actually like to ask this board if they will allow Assistant Manager Jack King to be included in those meetings and discussions with me, so that he can be included in this grant process. If you're okay with it, I'll schedule it during the day, during his regularly scheduled work hours.
Absolutely. I thought he already was.
Jack, are you okay with that? Okay. And then, Jack King and I have also been working on with Civic Engage, I always get that wrong. We actually have a meeting scheduled about the website, so we're in that process. Our goal is July-August timeframe for the new township website, which if you can't tell, I'm super excited about. I spent some time today trying to find something on our current website, and quite honestly, even as supervisor, couldn't find it. So, I understand the need for that update, and so does Jack King, he's been awesome, so look forward to that coming soon. Any other old business that you'd like to discuss? And then, open for citizens, general comments and questions.
Hello, my name is Heaven Sensky, I live in North Sherbain Township, and I'm here as a community organizer with the Center for Coalfield Justice. I just have a question about the plan to workshop ordinances. Would the board consider utilizing the solicitors' services to sort of give a brief understanding to the folks here of what the ordinance actually says? Or, is we putting, are we putting it on the public to educate themselves on that language?
I don't think one-
Can you put it up slightly in advance?
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to post it on the website, so that you can read it. I don't, it's quite long, I actually have a copy of it here.
Yeah, I realize it's like, long and complicated, and that's sort of why I was wondering if-
It's actually not that complicated.
Okay, so it's just lengthy?
It's lengthy.
Is it published online now, or is it just something that's sort of-
It is on there now, yeah. All our ordinances are online now.
Okay, yeah.
If you want a hard copy, you can call down to the township, and we'll get you a hard copy. I actually just read it this afternoon, just so I was educated. It's not super difficult to understand, it's just long to read.
Okay.
So, I think, and I think any of us could also answer, would, could answer questions.
Yeah, my concern was just that folks, you know, I think it would be helpful if somebody sort of give like key points of the ordinances during a sort of open discussion, or are you just gonna open the floor to residents?
So, we'll open the floor, but we, I can go through and do that, I mean, as chairperson, I can go through and give a quick summary.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for people.
Yeah, that's really easy to do. Thank you. Any other general comments and questions?
Diane Ritz-Nicolala from Sir James Drive in Windsor Woods. I know that the North Deep Paoli is a bonded road, and you were having some discussions with Range Resources on getting that fixed. I know this is a winter, and you know, there isn't a lot of work that's done, but we don't have any information, and the road is narrowing.
Yeah.
I mean, at one point, it's 15 feet wide by the railroad trestle.
I think our township engineer can address that.
It's Dawn. I was in, I was actually contacted today by Range Resources. They're gearing up for making improvements to the Paoli Road in mid-March. As we've reported to the board before, we have a plan for widening of the road from the, essentially, from just north of the overhead railroad bridge, all the way down to Miller's Run Road. They're, we're working right now on documents related to that, we need some easements, we have to adjust some people's driveways, and we're still trying to get one of the utility poles to be moved. But, the plan for this would be to get this work done. Range will make improvements to the road, even if it has to be in two phases. They'll improve all the way up to the well pad, and then they'll do the second part, which is the widening. What I'd like to do is get Bill Botterorf and Frank Gisio out, and we're gonna go over the road, and I told Range we would get back to them related to any other work that we see needs to be done on the road. So, the plan is to get the work done this year, and Range is committed to that as of a call today.
Okay. I also have something for each of you. Have you read, or are you familiar with Amity and Prosperity, the book? Does anybody out there, are you familiar with it?
Yes.
Raise of hands? Okay, I have a copy for each one of you, and included, I even have a bookmark for you, and it says, "Please read in full before you approve any more oil or gas permits. EHP, which is Environmental Health Project, recommends at least 3,281 feet setback from a gas well, to protect your voting and taxpaying constituents affected by the Augustine site from Miller's Run Road up North Deep Paoli to Coleman and Range Roads." So, I'm gonna give each one of you one of these.
Thank you.
Excuse me, while she's passing out those books, I'd like to say a word.
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
My name's Janice Blanock, I live at 16 Jupiter Drive. I would just like to say that I strongly believe that you folks on the board need to pay attention to what the citizens of Cecil Township are saying. I lost my son to a rare form of cancer, as you probably all know, along with some other boys, and there is something seriously wrong, and you need to take that all into consideration when you are working with this oil and gas industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jay Barros, so sorry, I don't have a guest for you tonight, but I have a couple questions for you that I'd like for you to answer tonight. First, can you give me an update, I live at Baker Road. Can you give an update from the turnpike, is when Baker Road is gonna be reconstructed and realigned with the roundabout?
They're saying six months.
Yeah, I think it's May, Phil.
Yeah, I met with John Zerco last-
Phil, can you use the microphone?
Thursday.
I met with John Zerco last Thursday with some other issues on Morgan Road and south and north Morgana, some drainage issues over there, and he had indicated at that time that they expect to have that thing open mid-May. The other consideration is the asphalt plants when they open up, so I was over there again today, and I noticed they've made some great progress. There's a paint mark on the road, how far back they're gonna pave, and then we'll see what kind of condition that thing is, and from that point back. But, right now, it looks like mid-May for an opening.
All right, thank you. Initially, we were told the road was supposed to close, Baker Road was supposed to close in October, and open up back up in February of 2020, which we are past that, obviously. It's an inconvenience to the dozens of residents that live there, more so, it's a little bit of a burden, because Ken and Mac will no longer come up our road to pick up our schoolchildren. So, we have to send them to the nearest places, actually, it's Skyzone. So, that's why I was just curious of what's going on, so we get an update. My wife has been actively communicating with Jason, and there's more information on his website than I actually could find out on Cecil Township's website, to your point. The second part is, when the road does open up, and Dawn has helped me in the past, can we do something about the speeding on Baker Road? I'm guessing because this is now gonna be the new highway, basically, 'cause people are gonna come up there versus going down Georgetown Road, which is a disaster, but thank God, you guys don't have to fix it. But, we have an issue, and I think almost the 28 years I've been there, I wanna say 20 years, I've been down here talking to you guys about the speeding on Baker Road. So, I'm asking you, we can do something about that? We've had so many accidents on my road since we've lived there. Fortunately, nobody has gotten seriously injured and stuff. The other thing I'd like to propose to you is you guys do something about the truck traffic. After 5 o'clock, after all, everybody comes out of Teodory Industrial Park, we have anywhere from 10 to 12, 18 wheelers coming up our road, when everybody else is home, just us residents see that. I don't, the road initially was a red dog road, if anybody recalls that, and you guys have done a good job fabricating the road, bringing it up to specs, if you will, trying to maintain it, I can't thank you enough for that. They don't have to deal with the potholes. But, the speed and the trucks is now, it's gonna destroy that road, and I'm guaranteeing you, once it's all done, and this road is completed to the roundabout, people will all be coming up that way, 'cause that way, you don't have to sit at the stop sign down there in Hendersonville. So, I'm hoping we can do something about that.
Sean, do you wanna, or just, we will work with our township police. Go ahead, Sean.
He probably already knows it's hard to find any spot for us to sit.
I know, you've painted white lines on the road every year.
Yeah, it's nearly impossible to do traffic on that road, but we had lines closer towards Baker, but of course, there was a stop sign there. We'll just have to put radar signs out there and be, you know, we'll sit there and watch traffic as much as we can. Do the truck traffic, I agree with you, throughout the years, it's increased with all the industries and everything building out there, and it is a nightmare. I'm sure you know we're down at the intersection of Georgetown, and we're doing our best. Everybody wants a traffic light or roundabouts. Hopefully, the state can address that intersection, too, that would probably help your road as well.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ed Jarris, and I live on Sir James Drive. I have a question about the bridges that are gonna be removed from the Cecil Park area. I don't know if you have a home for those yet, the ones you're deleting and taking out, but the Montreux Trail Council could possibly use one or two of those. They've had bridges donated in the past, because obviously, if they're not, you know, in that bad a condition for bicycling, they could be recycled and used again on the trail somewhere down the road. So, I don't know if you've already allocated use for those bridges that are being removed or not, but-
Not yet.
The Montreux Trail Council, for Montreux Trail, might be able to use a couple, if they could be donated, so.
I can have that conversation, I can't, Dan, do you have any comments about-
We talked to Ned Williams at the trail.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
They've had bridges donated in the past, because obviously, if they're not, you know, in that bad a condition for bicycling, they could be recycled and used again on the trail somewhere down the road. So I don't know if you've already allocated use for those bridges that are being removed or not, but.
Not yet.
The Montour Trail Council, for Montour Trail, might be able to use a couple if they could be donated, so.
I can have that conversation. I can't, Dan, do you have any comments about?
Ned Williams at the trail.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Ed BDMU's. How are we doing on the AML grant that I spoke of last month? I know last month, you directed Dan to look into it and inform the board about it. What, where are we at on the project there?
Go ahead, you can.
We spoke to the people at the DEP, abandoned mines related to the AML grant, and the deadline was January 31st for submission of a grant application. What we were told was they have two different piles of grants. The one, the one pile is the one where they associate economic development with the cleanup of the coal pile, and the second one is where they're just cleaning up coal piles all over the state. So they said that there is money to, to do the ones with economic development. As they anticipate, there will continue to be money for that available, but in order to make application, there has to be some sort of economic incentive attached with it. Since the Township's moved on, at least my understanding has moved on, from making this the public works building site, there's going to need to be a regrouping to figure out what that economic catalyst is before resubmitting a grant, and we didn't think it was prudent to sort of rush something in before it was thought out. So there's still the opportunity for a grant there. It's just not for this year. It would probably move into next year.
Are we aware of the deadline for next year right now, or when does that come up?
They, they have not released the deadline for next year yet.
Okay, so the second grant that really doesn't, isn't contingent on any economic development, just cleaning up the coal pile. Where are we at with that?
Well, we could submit a grant for that, but the, you just go into a pile, and it might be 20 years before anything's done.
So are we going to submit a grant?
That's, we haven't discussed that with the board yet. This was just transpired, so.
Well, here's the board. What are we going to do?
I mean, I'll be honest, and I'm, please don't take it as me throwing our engineer under the bus. That's not the case at all. When we sat in this seat last month, we thought that the deadline was not January 31st, and so when we realized it was, it was mid-month, and given that we are currently being sued for Sunshine Act violations, I was not at all comfortable with moving forward with a grant outside of a public meet, without having a public vote at a public meeting. I'll be honest, I don't have anything to hide. I've spent in excess of 4,000 of my own personal dollars defending a suit that I believe to be bogus, and I believe will be proven to be bogus, and I didn't want to be in that situation again. So I let, you know.
Yeah, but we're talking apples and oranges here. How could your lawsuit have anything to do with a grant that's going to clean up a gob pile that's spreading arsenic all over Mews?
How could we vote on a grant behind closed doors outside of a public meeting? We had a public meeting January 6th. We did not believe the deadline to be January 31st. We were told during the month of January that it was, in fact, January 31st. We did not have a public, another publicly scheduled meeting until this evening. So if we would have submitted a grant prior to tonight's meeting, would we then have been accused of violating the Sunshine Act again?
You could advertise with 24-hour notice. We did that last week for that FCO official.
You could have scheduled it.
I mean, it just seems to me there's way too much bickering here, and we're not getting anything accomplished.
I can't disagree with you.
They said it poses no harm if left alone.
What's that?
It poses no harm if left alone.
I disagree with you. There's a, there's a.
Well, then you're smarter than the guy that did all the testing.
No, no, I mean, that's, that's just a stupid comment by you, okay?
Well, by me, he made that comment.
Well, then, there was an engineer, Tommy, who, who was the environmental engineer that made the comment that the arsenic needs cleaned up? What's his name?
Dave Perry.
Wait, wait, time out.
How are you, how are you going to fight?
Time out, time out, time out, time out, time out. Mr. Perry didn't say that it needed to be cleaned up.
Yes, he did.
No, he did not.
We have it in writing.
No, he did not.
Tom, did he, did he say it or didn't he say it?
Wait, listen, listen, listen.
Don't go by him.
It could, he said.
Don't go by what he's saying.
Wait, listen, he said it could be cleaned up, not it needed to be cleaned up. Those are two very different things. I.
The transcript I read from what he said was it needed to be cleaned up.
I'm happy to share with you.
It poses a health hazard to the.
I'm happy to share with you.
Never said that.
The report, and I will, I will show you the video. He said it could be cleaned up, not it needed to be cleaned up, and he said.
Well, anything could be cleaned up.
Agreed. As Supervisor Fleer said, he said as it sits, it poses no health hazard currently.
That is not what I read.
Well, he read something wrong there. That's what he said.
Tom, did you not post questions to this guy?
Yeah.
And what did he say?
He talked about all the.
Tom, can you talk?
Did he say it needed to be cleaned up?
He talked about all the pollution and contaminants that are running off the site every time it rains, whenever kids ride on with dirt bikes, creating dust.
Did he say it needed to be cleaned up?
Well, no, he wouldn't tell us what to do. He wouldn't tell us what to do, but he says it, it's arsenic that's affecting the residents in Mews.
There you go.
He said it could be cleaned up.
Come on, anything could be cleaned up.
But he also said that as it sits, listen, my daughter goes to school right there. I have friends that live right around that area. If I felt like it, it posed a health hazard, I'd be the first person. He told us in no uncertain terms that as it sits, it poses no health hazard.
Never said that.
He did.
No, okay, but you got, you said he, he said it doesn't oppose, he said it does. There's got to be truth there somewhere.
Agreed.
It really doesn't matter, because we already have voted, we're not going further with it.
You're not going further with it?
No.
You live in Mews?
We did not vote that.
I've lived there my whole life. I just talked to an individual this last week who took part in hands of that cleanup, and he knows where everything is up there, and there's a lot of bad, negative information I was given this week that's just reconfirmed my opinion of the whole place. I've lived there my whole life, so who's sick, who's died of cancer? Nobody. I played on them slay dumps. I swam in the cricks whenever flooded in orange and black muck.
That, that's it.
So, I mean, you're in a minority of people that, you're whistling in the dark. What do you want?
I'm in a minority of people?
Yeah, you are. You're in a minority of people.
I don't think so.
I think you are.
You a doctor?
No.
Well, then you can't be saying who's getting sick and who ain't.
He's not saying that. Who's getting sick? I've been there my whole life. Tell me.
Well, I ain't feeling good, maybe that affected me.
Maybe you got.
And I ain't laughing about it.
I will tell you.
Let's get the guy, the engineer, here, and let's ask him questions point-blank.
Where were you when he was here?
Wait, he was here.
Where were you here when he came and gave?
He testified for three hours.
Some of us got to work.
Well, hold on. We can't schedule, hold on, we can't schedule meetings based on everybody's work schedule. He was here April 25th, 2019. He testified for excess of three hours in front of the public and in front of this[1739.63]